Good evening. It is Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, 7:00 PM. I move to call the Fairfield Township Board of Trustees to order. Mrs. Schultz, will you call the role?
Trustee Harkemeyer.
Here.
Trustee Burning.
Present.
Trustee McAfee.
Here.
Let's see, we do not have the gentleman here for the invocation. Okay, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I believe there's a presentation. When the gentlemen get here, we'll circle back to that. Okay, but in the meantime, we'll move forward with the meeting agenda. Okay, the first thing, items for board discussion. First thing is the Milton Street Park Playground Equipment for two- to five-year-olds.
All right, you have Milton Street Park. Trustees approved an application of the ARPA funds through these SLF. Yeah, the state and local fiscal recovery funds portion for Milton Street Park improvements. The proposal was for playground equipment at Milton Park for two- to five-year-olds. The township was awarded $150,000. There's a resolution later on in the agenda for the purchase and installation of the equipment. The company that we're considering is a part of Omnia Partners, which is a purchasing co-op that meets state bid requirements. Purchasing of the equipment during the off-season would allow the township to save approximately $23,000 for purchasing it at this time. That's all I have on that.
Okay. All right, any questions on that one?
That's for the new park.
That's right.
Is there any way we could, I know we talked about it in the past, basketball hoop up there?
Yeah, we can look into that, for sure.
I mean, I still get requests for it up there.
Yeah, I think it's, I still think there's a good location for it, kind of in the rear of the park.
Okay, anything else on that? All right, we will rotate back to, we have some Valvoline employees in tonight, and we are going to recognize you for some actions that were taken. Very exciting. I'd like to ask Peters and Coomer to approach and tell us what happened.
Good evening. On behalf of Fairfield Township Fire Department, we are honored to recognize Cameron, Victor, and Cameron for their quick, courageous, and selfless actions during a medical emergency that occurred on July 30th, 2024. Victor cannot be here with us, we have Cameron and Cameron. They're gonna take Victor's award and give it to him. When faced with life-threatening medical emergency, Cameron, Cameron, and Victor demonstrated presence of mind and immediately responded by performing CPR on an adult male who went into cardiac arrest while at the Valvoline on Princeton Road. Despite inherent challenges of such a critical situation, these three remained calm under pressure, took decisive action, and initiated life-saving CPR without hesitation. Their intervention directly contributed to maintaining the individual's life until emergency medical personnel arrived. While the outcome did not end the way we would have hoped, you gentlemen gave the victim a chance that they otherwise wouldn't have had. Your willingness to act in a moment of crisis serves as a powerful reminder of the difference one person can make. This recognition is a reflection of their remarkable commitment to the safety and well-being of others. We are proud to honor these, their efforts with certificates of merit, and we are grateful for their service to our community. If you two gentlemen would like to come up front, please.
Thank you. That was awesome. Very cool. All right, we'll circle back. Our Memorial Day celebration.
So I had a meeting with Fred Valerius along with Chuck was in that meeting, as well as Katie Braswell from the foundation. And veterans would like us to consider re-establishing a Memorial Day celebration at our memorial. I know in the past, last year, we thought maybe it was good to give our aging veterans a break because they were being pulled in so many different ways for all the different celebrations. But I think the committee, the Memorial Committee members feel it's important to re-establish some sort of Memorial Day celebration. And so I told them, I said, "I can't make any promises, but I will talk to the other trustees about it." So I told them, "What if we didn't have it on Memorial Day? If we had it around Memorial Day?" Because they're also going to other celebrations or events on that date. He said, "That would be fine. He would be open to that." So, you know, maybe something on the Friday before or the Saturday before, or something around Memorial Day. And I told him that maybe also something not a grand of, as a scale as we have done before on Memorial Day, but maybe something appropriate like what we did on Veterans Day. It was a smaller program. We involved the schoolchildren. Veterans were there. It was a very nice ceremony. The weather was amazing. But if we could do something like that for Memorial Day, and that way we're just doing something, you know, about six months apart, so twice a year, they would appreciate that. So I would be eager to hear input from the other two trustees on their thoughts behind that.
I don't know when the kids get out of school, but I really like the idea of incorporating the kids. I think it just provides a great educational opportunity for them. And the Veterans Day celebration was wonderful. Having the kids sing and get involved, that was very heartfelt and very touching. So I like that idea. I also think it's wise not to do it exactly on Memorial Day because there are a lot of other competing events that particular day. So, yeah, I don't mind looking into something, you know, about the scale of what we did before and not necessarily on that day unless it happens to work out.
Yeah, I know that Fairfield graduated, their graduation ceremony was this past year Memorial Day weekend. I think that was another deciding factor why we said maybe not do something this year or in 2024. So it's possible it's gonna be the same weekend again. And so maybe we look at that schedule, see when it is, and do something not on that date. So trustee McAfee, your thoughts?
I'd agree. And, you know, that is a long weekend holiday for a lot of people. So if we could maybe do a Thursday, you know, the week before, something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And maybe we could even do an evening so people can be off of work and attend it. It'll be light out. Maybe more veterans would have an opportunity to be there. So is it okay if we have Chuck talk to Del Hodge about planning an event similar to what we had just the other day?
See what he thinks.
Okay, great. All right, well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. And I'm sure the Veterans Committee appreciates it as well.
Well, we're talking about that a little bit. The Veterans Day program was awesome.
Yeah.
And I'm sure, I would hope, but if they haven't, maybe we could recognize the choir that came over and contributed. Either send a letter of thank you.
Okay.
Something to the instructor and the group. I don't know if we could invite them and have them sing again for us, you know.
Yeah.
I think that'd be awesome.
Okay. Yeah, maybe we could have them come at our December meeting and sing "A Christmas Carol." Okay. That's great. Good idea.
Next item, Administrative Office Seasonal Intern.
Thank you. One of the interns at Fairfield Township used over the summer in the Administration Office has reached out to the township to ask if we would need any help during her winter break. The individual Haley Sellit, she was a nominal intern, very quick learner, very productive, maintained positive relationships with residents and employees of the township. She is available from December 14th to January 27th. Miami has a long winter break. She was previously paid $15 an hour. She will not hit any thresholds related to medical coverage or retirement contributions or anything like that if we hire her back. The township has plenty of tasks that she would be able to help with. Specifically, she's capable of handling social media updates and things like that and as well as end-of-the-year kind of processing that we have to do in the zoning department as well as administration offices. And she's, you know, well-versed in zoning. So she'd be, she'd be able to be used in many different aspects. But, so I think it would be a great idea to hire her back. That being said, I didn't have the chance to really bring this too, with too much in advance to you guys. So we don't have a motion on here. But to, just to be fair to her and her scheduling, if the board is interested in hiring her, I prefer that we did it tonight just to provide her with advanced notice so she could schedule and plan appropriately.
Thoughts?
She, could she be used across all departments if they were to need somebody? Is that something that we could consider?
Sure, yeah. She could help out wherever it's needed, yeah.
Okay. I guess once January rolls around, there's things that need to be started for the new year. As you're closing out December, you're also carrying out for 2025 in January. Would she be able to help out if, like when personnel take time off for the holidays? If they need to travel, could she fill in for them?
Yeah, she would definitely have the potential to do that, for sure. She could help as long as, you know, there's, staff's always here. So she'd definitely be able to help fill in during holidays. And we're gonna, we'll be flexible with her schedule, you know, because it's also the holidays. So she'll have commitments as well.
How many hours a week?
We're looking at about 20 hours a week.
And you've got 20 hours worth of work to do?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thoughts, trustee McAfee?
I hadn't thought about it until I saw it on the agenda. I'd like to see some feedback from, she was here before. I'd like to see some feedback from that. And I'd like to see an outline of things that we would want her to do. And I don't see any reason why we couldn't tell. We have the intention of doing something, but we won't do it till December rather than we're gonna do it.
So do you be in favor of letting her know that the intent is in December as long as everything is?
I'm in favor of if it's laid out like it should be, hiring someone to help out during that period of time.
Okay.
In this case, it might be her.
So you think that's fair? She would understand that her intent is to hire her?
I mean, I think that's, if that's what you guys are comfortable doing, I think it would be fair to hire her if that was the decision. We can make the motion, I think it'd be fair to make the decision tonight.
And what happens?
Just so it's in place, and then I can work on, you know. I do, I have a list of tasks that she's, you know, that she's gonna work on. I can revamp her job description and provide it to you guys if you'd like. But it's just a seasonal position. It's nothing.
So and if we provided a thing that said a maximum of 20 hours a week, and then you put together a list and we figure, well, this is more like 15 hours a week as, or?
Yeah, and if we, if.
We could adjust her hours.
If we had less work, we will tell her not to come in.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, we did that with her, that's what we've done with seasonal interns in the past. You know, it's, if, some days we're busy, some days we're not as busy. Yeah, it's as needed as that may need places.
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable saying to go ahead and make a motion. I'm not making the motion. I'm saying the intent to make a motion this evening, the intent to hire her and, but with the maximum of 20 hours. That way, we do have the flexibility. If there's only 10 hours of work that week, she gets 10 hours of work. I don't want her coming in here and sitting around. I don't think that you would say, "We need an intern" if you only had 10 hours of work. So, but I do know that, you know, I mean, our employees do take time off during the holidays, and they're not holidays. They're, they're, they're off during the work week.
Right. There's a lot of vacation time that we'll use this time.
So, so I would be, I would be comfortable, you know, making, making that motion to, to hire her with the stipulation that would be no more than 20 hours. And then it would be based on Mr. Goins, Mr. Goins, the days that you deem necessary. So. That's where I'm sitting. What about you?
I think that's fine. So we probably, do you want to do that now or wait till we get to the resolutions? And then also to trustee McAfee's point, I would, I would hope that you would put together a job description and a list of tasks that she could work on and forward that to the board.
We probably already have a job description for interns, correct?
I do, yeah.
Just forward it out to the board.
I have a, I have a job description for an internship. I'll just change the dates on it. And I have a list of tasks already put together.
Let me share a question. During the course of the meeting, as we're going through here, so we can do it maybe later, could you write something down that states like her name? Because if we're, are we just, are we just authorizing the hiring of an intern? And then you are recommending this particular person?
I mean, we could do that, or you could authorize, you make the motion to authorize Haley Sellit at a rate of $15 an hour for, you know, between December 14th and January 27th, not exceed 20 hours a week.
And how many weeks is that? Six weeks? December 14th through January?
January 27th.
27.
So the 28th would be six weeks, so just about six weeks.
Seven weeks, really.
I could write something down.
Well, I just think that if we have something in writing, we could call it Exhibit A or whatever, you know, based on.
Definitely your name.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll keep moving, and then if you want to pull that together?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Does, do we have anyone that has signed in for this evening?
No.
Okay, we will bypass the communication and we will move to consent agenda. All items under consent agenda are considered by the Board of Trustees to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any trustee may remove an item from the consent agenda by request. No second is required for removal of an item. Items removed for separate discussion will be considered after the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes.
Trustee Burning?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes, that passes. We will, okay, fiscal officers report, please.
Okay, thank you. I have a few things tonight. The first one is, the audit has been completed. They're currently waiting on one item for a follow-up, and then you will all be receiving it. There were no audit findings again this year. Two management letter comments, both very minor. So I was happy with the audit. The second thing is, I think I sent you guys an email about designating someone for your records training. And so Noel took that records training, but I found out after the fact that it has to be in the meeting minutes in order to have a designate. So I am requesting that as of tonight, it's in the meeting minutes that Mr. McAfee would like Noel to be his designate. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the next time she takes it, she can then list you. She went to list you, and they wanted a copy of the meeting minutes, and we didn't have it. So I know your term is still got three years, so we have plenty of time. But I just wanted to mention that in the future, if someone wants a designate for their term, to please let me know. We can put it in the meeting minutes, then it can happen. So I'll make sure it's taken care of her next time. So I wanted to mention that. As you all know, I've been working on the budget with our department heads. This year's is gonna look a little different. You know, we're gonna have to take salaries from other places as we knew was coming. So I have the budget ready to send to you. I'm going to send it, and then at the meeting in December, I will go over some key items that maybe look different this time or things that I think you guys might be interested in so that you can get the overall aspect. For instance, the bond summary, our bond payments went down like 1.3 million for next year. So that was great. But we had to take salaries from different places. So I kind of wrote a summary of maybe like 10 things Mr. Goins and I went over that would be like key things that will help you understand the difference in the budget this year.
Do you have a timeframe from when we'll see that?
It's ready. I was kind of just wanting to give you some capital wishlist items, so we're gonna work on that this week.
Wishlist?
Yeah, you know, each year, instead of budgeting for capital, I put contingencies in, and then I let the department heads kind of give me their wishlist so that you guys can actually see it, even though you won't, you know, you'll know that it's coming maybe in the year to be asked for. So it's kind of like the things that might come up. So we're finishing that list, and then the budget will be to you by the end of this week.
Really, it's necessary equipment, right?
Yes.
Not wish.
Yes, but maybe a priority list, I should put. So you should have the budget by the end of the week. Like I said, it's, it looks different this year. We have to, you know, discuss some important items, but it's ready to go. So if you have any questions after you get it and look at the details, please ask me. But if it's just general things, I'll give you a summary in December, and I think that'll hit a lot of the key points.
Can you, I think you did this in the past, show us 2024, 23, and maybe budgeted, but also actually spent?
Yes.
Revenue. Put all four of those together.
Yes, I have, right now I have 2024 budgeted, and then 2024 actuals through 1031, then I have it annualized. And then I have the 2025 ask. As you know, sometimes like with fire and police, we don't all take out of fire or police. We have to go to safety service. So sometimes their expenses are kind of all over the board. So sometimes it's really hard to see exactly what's fire, what's police, so.
But you're gonna show us that?
Yes, yes, I'll show you that. So if you have any questions, once you get it, let me know. Otherwise, we can discuss it in December, and I'll, I'll need approval December. So if you have any questions, make sure you ask me ahead of time.
And again, this might be a time when we have to meet more than once to have that public discussion
Yes.
about where we're at and, and what we're gonna do about it.
Right, absolutely. I think that's all I had. Yeah. Oh, I had one more thing. And this is just an ask from me. So, and this came up because the bond payments are on this summary, but I wanted to know if in the future, how you guys felt about me not having to bring reoccurring items such as the bond payments, the Fairfield City School payments, because we're under contract to pay those. You guys signed the contract that we have to pay them. So it just seems cumbersome to bring them twice. And the reason I'm asking is because if the payments are due and I have to wait for a board meeting, sometimes we're cutting it close. And it would only be things that you already authorize us to pay, such as, like, so when we get our settlement, our tax settlement, we have to pay the TIF portion, the Fairfield City Schools. There's zero doubt about that. We have to pay it. So I was gonna see if you felt comfortable just seeing it on the payment report as paid as opposed to bringing a resolution every time. They're now going on the consent agenda, so it's, you know, it's fairly customary. But I wanted to know your thoughts on that because it seems.
I liked it the way it was today, really. You know, it's still on there, it'll be in the records, you know, as far as tracking that.
Okay, that's totally fine.
Consent, and again, a month before, because we know when it is, right?
For the bond, but.
June and, June and December?
Yes, but like, so if we don't get our settlement, we have to pay Fairfield City Schools within 30 days. If there's ever a meeting canceled, we'll never, we won't make that deadline. So, I mean, I was just asking for that since, you know, this is about my seventh year doing this, and it's always the same. You know, it's the same bond payment. We have an amortization schedule. You sign for the loan. There's no change in the amount. There's no change in the amount for Fairfield City Schools. I mean, it's not like you can say no to a payment you agreed to. So that was just my thought.
And I see that as a little different.
Okay.
With that, it's a tip agreement versus the actual repayment of the bond.
Okay.
Well, I understand what you're saying.
But, I mean, if you guys are not comfortable with that, that's fine. I just thought I would ask.
Does that change to the school?
No, it doesn't. Well, the, the rate could change possibly, but.
The money could change.
It hasn't changed since I've been here, 63.3% every single year.
The money part.
Yes, that's true. You're right. Based on the TIF amount of the TIF.
Based on what it collects.
Right, but you would see it on the payment report as being paid because you get the payment reports, which I hope you guys have liked the changes to the payment report? Good?
I think we're getting there.
Okay, is, what else would you like on there?
It's a lot of information.
It's enough? Is it enough?
It is right now, yeah. But I mean, and I understand what we're trying to do, so.
Okay, and I'd like the change where, so when I helped do this payment report, I realized that they were only putting the checks on there. And I was like, well, they want to know what's paid. They don't care how it's paid. They want to know everything that's paid. So we talked to them about just doing week-to-week. So it's Tuesday through the Monday, the next Monday, everything paid. So even, you'll even see payroll, everything. But I don't, I don't think it's just ever registered that, why would we just give you checks? You care what, no matter how we pay it, you care it's paid. So now it's everything, gives you some description. That helps, I'm sure. So I thought it was a great change, and.
It is. Resolution number would be helpful sometimes.
Okay, I can add, we can add that.
That reminds me that I voted for it or against it.
Okay, no, that's fine. I can do, we can do that.
Again, because some of those names we see, we don't see them all the time.
Right.
I do all the time ask them, "Who is this for? Who is this for?"
Yeah.
But if it had a resolution number on there and it wasn't made up, I wouldn't know.
Okay, well, I can absolutely have them add a resolution number because in the purpose, when they put the description, they can just add the resolution number. That's easy enough. So if you guys have any more thoughts and want any more detail or any other things, let us know. We're trying to be more transparent and make it easier for you to understand what's going on.
The credit card is a chore, and, and it takes me a long time to go through it, which I do. But there's still a lot of receipts or email copies of things that aren't signed by a supervisor.
Okay.
You know, and of course, I saw the ones this month where we paid some sales tax and stuff like that, and they're all aware. They made the notes on it.
Yes.
So I knew, I knew they had caught it, things like that. But, you know, it would be nice again to know what department and what account and what the purpose of it was, especially when you see something like $250 to the Mexican restaurant and nothing else on it. $250 even. It would be helpful to know.
Okay.
I think, what, what that was for.
I actually have a good solution for the credit card, but you may not like it. And that is.
I don't like people telling me I don't like it before I hear it. Go ahead.
Well, we use the same system at the parks, the same exact system for the credit card. And the manager uploads a copy of the receipt and puts the purpose in, in the PO on every one of their charges. So then our directors each have a sign-in. It's a read-only sign-in. They can sign in at any time to the credit card and click on it and see the receipt, the purpose, everything. And then. And then when it goes, and if you would not like to sign on, we can print that and just pay, put a cover sheet on it and then it would be there. But our point is to reduce paper. So if you want to see it by paper, that's not going to work for you because everything's electronic.
See it by paper. If I know we're doing a thorough job of making sure we're paying what we're supposed to be paying and nothing else.
Yes.
You know, and again, this is year, year nine for me coming back and this has been a chore with the credit card. And more people have credit cards now, right? It's not just the department heads.
Right.
There's all kinds of people that have them. So it's just, it would be comforting if I could know that that's there and if I wanted to look at it, I could.
Okay. I mean, I can easily move to that. I've just been trying to avoid it because I know you're not an electronic person and I, it also would take them, each manager having to do that part two. So they would each have their own sign on and they'd have to upload the receipts and put a purpose. And it's, it's a mandatory field. You can't submit it until you have your purpose, your PO, your receipt uploaded. And because if you have a PO, like to your point where you say like, if we're spending something that's not authorized, they wouldn't do that because they have to have a PO to submit the receipt. And then it gets submitted, it goes to their manager to approve and then it comes to us to pay.
I mean, do you think that's an efficient way for our employees to do it?
I do, but I'm a very computer-related person and so I don't want to push on to people that are not computer people. But we have to get there eventually. Yes, I do think it's something we need to do eventually. You know, we need to be paperless eventually, just like our new PO process. We're trying to get paperless. It has everything we need, but we shouldn't have to print out paper and go to each person's office. That slows things down. But I'm, you know, that's just me. I'm a, I'm a very electronic person. So I do think that we need to get there eventually, but I just.
I'm okay with paperless.
Okay.
Again, as long as we have the safeguards in place to make sure that we're spending the money the way we're supposed to.
Okay. And it wouldn't cost anything because Huntington's already set up to do it. We just don't use it.
And I like that even better now.
Okay.
So the POs, they don't, they don't get opened until we approve them. They can't, you open them, but they don't spend out of them until we approve them, right?
Well, they're, once they're approved by the administrator, if it's under 7,500, yes, they get spent. What you're approving is just the list showing what was opened. But if it's over 7,500, no, we don't, don't even open the PO until it's approved by resolution.
So we did a process mapping activity a couple of weeks ago. I'll talk to that more, to that point more when we get to board report. But we did do, put in some time to look at those processes, which kind of correlates to this, but I don't want to talk about that right now.
Okay.
Get to that in a few minutes.
That's all I had.
Okay, administrator.
All right, I will try to keep it brief. October 19th, we had a Halloween at Heroes Park, a movie after dark. We had great turnout, estimated over 350 kids participated in the event. Hotel Transylvania played after the trick-or-treat portion of the event. I want to thank the Fire Department, Police Department, Public Works Department, administration staff for helping plan and execute the event. I also want to thank Walmart, Raising Canes, our group Township Tavern for their contributions. It was a good event. I feel like we've talked about Veterans Day. You were all there. It was, I thought it went very well.
It's very nice. Very well done.
Yeah. I guess I'll echo on some of your points. I want to thank the students at Fairfield East and Fairfield North for participating in the parade. Specifically, I want to thank the students of Fairfield North who took part in the celebration for carrying the flags and for singing during the ceremony. I also want to thank Dell Hodge for all his time and effort, being the main and not completely sole member, but almost sole member of the Veterans Memorial Group. I also want to thank the other two guys. They're great. Project updates. King Avenue CDBG project contractor finished storm pipe on Friday. They're working on it. Working on the east side, going to move to the west side, then they'll move to Peter for that project, but it's, it's going well. Surfacing at Schaefer's Run Park, they're about this close from completion. The surfacing is about 99% in. The new equipment's installed. Roundabout on Tyler'sville and Seward is open. Okay, that was the, okay, and then.
Well, before you leave the roundabout, I mean.
Yep.
Are we going to get a sign up there or is it just going to stay there?
Well, it is in the city of Fairfield, but I'm going to be talking to them about that.
It's not completely in the city.
The intersection, the right away is.
Right away.
Right away is.
Even in front of UDA.
The UDA corners.
Well, yeah, no, that is us, yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're right, yeah.
We have a fourth of it.
I know, I'm going to talk.
Maybe a fourth of a size sign.
I think there's some problems with that because I believe that we can't, that roundabouts are not to have upright signs on them because I believe it's a hazard. And then I have concerns about that being, saying Fairfield Township when there's a lot in that area or that says Fairfield when there is a lot in that area that is Fairfield Township. So I think it's confusing and I think Mr. Goins is having some conversations with the city of Fairfield about that.
I'm not sure why they put a, put the sign where they did anyway.
I don't think you could put it in a roundabout.
It looks, I wouldn't have placed it there.
They, they used to have it and I haven't gone through.
It's still there.
The other one's still there too.
What else?
Yeah. That sign's still there. Update on Safe Route School. An authorized designs consultant has started some preliminary design work for the project. I had a meeting with them last week, I think. During the meeting, we were able to, they were able to come to an agreement of adding 700 additional feet of sidewalk to the scope of the project. So on the map, the blue lines represent the initial scope of the project, the sidewalk, and the red line represents 700 additional feet. So the capped amount was increased from $492,000 to $560,000 with zero additional contribution from the township. So that's good. This item came in kind of late, later. So ODNR grant for pickleball. I heard back from them. They're not interested in granting full award to Fairfield Township. I don't know what they want to do with anybody else. But they did offer awarding a partial contribution of $34,000. We asked for $85,000 from them. The project is $120,000. So if we do go that route, we'd be on the hook for $86,000 for the pickleball project. So that's something I think I'll need a little direction from you on to see if we, you know, if we want to, if we want to entertain utilizing the 35,000 or whatever from ODNR or not. That's, I guess.
Will remind us now what, what you submitted? Were you asking for two additional surfaces with four courts or were you talking about?
So that's, the one I submitted was for Heroes Park. It was a conversion of what's existing, resurfacing the whole thing, refencing, keeping one tennis court and then converting the old one into four pickleball courts. That's, that's the gist of the project. And the quotes that we got were around $120,000 for that.
That was including the fencing? That's.
Sorry, that was including the fencing and resurfacing the whole lot, relining one of the tennis courts and creating on the second tennis court, four pickleball courts with appropriate fencing between those.
Right.
So we'd go from two tennis courts to one tennis court and four pickleball courts at Heroes Park.
Correct.
Without increasing the footprint of the existing structure.
That's correct.
But it would be a total resurface. It would have to be, the whole thing would have to be restreached.
Yes, everything would be restreached, right? I personally am in favor of moving forward. I think we could take advantage of getting, you know, almost 25% of the project, maybe closer to 30% of the project covered. If we say, no, thank you, we'll do it later, we would, we could lose that.
Right.
We would lose that amount and we'd be on the, for everything later if we decide to do it later. So I'm in, I'm in favor of moving forward with the project. It's my opinion. I think, I see families over there all the time playing pickleball together on the tennis courts. I think that would be a wonderful addition to the quality of, of living in Fairfield Township.
So ODNR did say that this is not, they're not officially granting us this, but they're feeling us out? So we'll see. If you guys are interested in moving forward, I'll see what they have to say.
Let's continue. Is everyone comfortable continuing?
We really need the 120,000.
I'll say, what about a little bit more? We'll see if I can get a little bit more.
Okay. What else you got?
Oh, that's pretty much it. Yep. We did do, I mean, yeah, that's pretty much all. Some update, we've been doing some updates to the purchasing process in general. We've been.
You can talk about what we did if you want.
All right. Well, I'll, I'll let you talk about some of it. I'll talk about, you talk about everything I don't talk about.
Okay.
Perfect. So something we've been doing is reviewing all existing vendors that we have on file. Each department head's been tasked with reviewing the vendors that they've used within the past two years. We're going to remove any vendors and just clean up our database if possible, if they're not in use. After that, each department head and assistant is going to review that list again and complete a vendor certification form, which just, you know, further acknowledges that there's no conflicts with any of the vendors on the, on the form. The additional signers are me on that form and then the fiscal officer. The form has been vetted by our law, law directors and they think it's amazing. So that's great. Oh, the third try, right? It was amazing. So yeah, with that, we're also just updating some of the forms relevant to getting vendors in our system. Kind of trying to streamline that process a little bit more for all vendors, all new vendors, to make sure that they're aware of expectations and things in advance and to make sure that we get our fiscal office what they need on the first go-round. That's just try to reduce back and forth as much as possible. So that's, that's some of it.
Yeah, and I mean, I was just saying, we got together, each of the departments and we did some process mapping and I think you're going to get hard copies of the results of that to everyone here soon, maybe before the December meeting. And we just did process mapping to kind of outline what everyone was doing. And then we solidified it and standardized it into one process that everyone will be utilizing. So it's based on the different levels, either department head, the administrator had to sign off so that it's all layered out like that too. So it does, I think, give some standardization to the process. It gives visibility to the process so that we are all kind of on the same page with that. And once we have it standardized, we can approve upon that later. But I'm looking forward to everyone being able to take a look at the standardized, the standardized process. I can't speak tonight. That'll kind of give us an idea about what that looks like and how we'll move forward. And I think it's just a good way to, to establish the controls and the guidelines so that everybody is on the same page for what we need to do to get things done.
Yeah. And there, most everyone was doing things pretty similarly.
Pretty close.
But we're just tightening it up and we're all using the same, we're going to be moving forward, using the same form in all departments. Same version of the same form.
That was a big takeaway is we implemented that PO form and we did some modifications to it.
Pretty much right.
So that it's, it's something that's standard across all three departments.
And it has the, we were able to sign it digitally because, you know, we have a tech wizard in charge of that.
So we're moving along with that. And I think between that and then the, the vendor controls and then the backend piece of it with the report that we updated, I think that that gives us a lot of visibility for the process all the way through from beginning to end. And of course, this is just the first, first slice at it. We can always, and we should, continue to look at it, continue to do more continuous improvement on it. But we've standardized it. We've put some controls in place and I think it's a good basis to keep moving forward. Long-term, we might want to look at, you know, putting this into more of a electronic sort of process, something to think about. But for now, I think it's good that we're doing what we can with what we've got to make it streamlined and efficient.
We could upgrade our accounting software and have this all done electronically too.
Long-term.
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 Real long-term.
But I didn't want to.
For free, right? Is that free too?
It's not free. I'll ask for it next year, next time.
That's all I have for the first.
Okay.
Well, before we go into resolutions, I'd like to make a motion. With amended agenda to make a motion?
I believe, do we?
Let's make a motion to amend the agenda.
You can, you can if you want. I'm fine either way, whatever you select.
Okay. Well, I think we can just do motions without amended agenda. So I move to hire Haley Salat to serve as a seasonal intern for Fairfield Township at the rate of pay of $15 per hour for the term of December 14th through January 27th. So that is December 14th, 2024 through January 27th, 2025, and not to exceed 20 hours of work per week.
Second.
Trustee, I'm sorry.
Before you call the Rollies one, make sure we're clear again.
Okay.
That if there's only 15 hours of work that week, she's only going, I put that trust in you. Okay?
Thanks.
And obviously notify the other staff members to make sure that they're using her efficiently and that they're also continuing with their work. But obviously there's work there to be done that we need to give her the work to do because it'll be also a learning experience for her as we go.
For sure.
Okay.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee McAfee?
Yes. No holidays.
Great.
No overtime.
Yep.
May we have the first resolution, please?
All right. Resolution number 24147. Resolution approving purchase of 18 in-car computers for the Police Department from Dell Technologies and the total amount of $49,903.2.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion? Chief, anything you care to add?
Our officer, excuse me, I reported October 7th, pretty much highlighting the fact that we have 18 computers. Five are out of warranty and they're between four and eight years old. The ones that are not out of warranty will be out of warranty in 2025. They're very slow. They were set up originally, which is state of the art, eight gigabytes of RAM, which was fine several years ago because we only had Butler County Dispatch and a CAD system. Since that time, we've added lens locking, in-car cameras, body cameras, Sundance reporting system, the flock camera system, OLED leads and GPS. So in essence, if an officer makes a traffic stop right now and he has to wait eons for the information to come back. Yeah, like the old days. So really we're into life as far as the lap house go or the in-car computers. And so the ask is for replacing all of them. The cost is $49,903.02.
Any further discussion?
And that was in the budget for this year?
I believe this came probably to me mid-year.
Tell me to send it, send you a preparation for this year?
There is money appropriated, yes, in safety service fund.
And what do we, what do we think the life of these are going to be?
Well, I hope a long time, but no telling with everything that's coming out now, AI, who knows?
How long will you have the other ones?
Between four and eight years.
Some before and some after you can.
Yes, correct.
And is that a warranty on them and is it maintenance or anything like that included?
Primarily the maintenance is usually done by Brooks because they are the ones who hook everything up for us. And then as it relates to the actual hardware, I'm assuming, we're not assuming, I know that they're guaranteed for maybe a couple of years. That's about it. It's, it's ever-changing so fast that what we buy in 2025 will be probably outdated by '26, '27. It's ever changing so fast that what we buy in 2025 will be probably outdated by 26, 27.
We're getting the new stuff, we're not getting last year's model yet.
No, it's all new stuff, yes. I did look into a cheaper option, and that was to add 32 gigabytes of RAM. SWOCA was not really supportive of that because of the fact that the computers that we would add that to, they were out of warranty anyway. So there's no telling what, and they're so old, there's no telling what adding that 32 RAM would cost as far as technical issues.
18, that's how many cars we have that hit the road every day?
Mark Guinness, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Schultz?
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
Trustee Maccabee?
Yes.
That passes, may we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution number 24148, resolution designating Fairfield Township roads for bid on the attached retrace estimate list to be certified for funding upon the awarding of contract as determined by the Butler County Engineers Office with a cost not to exceed
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion?
Are we doing these two roads this year?
Sure.
These two. We're going to get replaced now?
Yes.
Do they have it now? And then we'll do them again next year?
What, what road are you talking about?
Morris Road and Green Lawn. Morris Road and Green Lawn.
I think this is our 2025 list.
Right, but I was.
Well, I have to say, I don't, I don't believe that they were done this year.
Okay.
Well, we did some this year, right?
Yes, we did do retrace this year in the spring.
Yes.
And I know you guys checked it, two, two of the roads, usually we have to do that if it gets done, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Maccabee?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
That passes, may we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution number 24149, resolution designating Fairfield Township roads for bid on the attached paving estimate list to be certified for funding upon the awarding of contract as determined by the Butler County Engineers Office with a cost not to exceed
Motion to adopt?
Second.
All right, so we need to have some discussion on this one. Mr. Goins, can you give us an overview?
Sure thing. So attached to this resolution are three different exhibits. Exhibit A includes the full list, which is the total listed on the resolution. Exhibit B subtracts a number of roads and brings the total down to $686,877.33. And Exhibit C, it's just a different list, and it's $742,375.99. These exhibits, these options, were put together by the Public Works Director, just at the request of the Administrator, to kind of provide the board some additional options to consider. He put this based on his recommendations, his belief that these would be the best options to consider.
King Avenue is on two of the list, and the work they did at King, they're getting ready to finish that, disturb the pavement?
Yeah, oh, yes, yes, they basically cut a foot out of one side, and then, now that they're moving to the other side, they're also going to tear up part of it in order to put in the curb. So, and I don't know why that that's not part of the grant, but it's not. The paving is not, no.
Repaving the road is not?
No.
That'd be very unusual if it's not.
That's pretty standard with the CDBG project.
Yeah, they do all the work, they get it, they clean it up so that it's all level, but they don't repave it. That was the same thing that happened on Lennox. When they did Lennox, they come through and they cut it all up, and then we come back and had to pave it prior, the following year.
Because that looks like the difference between the least amount and the second least amount.
And that's, that's, you are correct. Alls we did was we added King to the second list to come up with the third list.
You know, and I'm okay with submitting this, but this is not the bid, this is the estimate.
Correct.
When the bids come in, we could trim it back if it's, if it's 30% higher than we think it is.
I think there's.
So I talked to the Engineers Office today, just to get clarification on that point. They said that what trustees approved, it should be what you anticipate on paving. If they allow every township to subtract a substantial amount of roads, it would have the potential to impact the bids, how they come in, because it's, they're basing, you know, the bids on qualities of the whole project, because they bid, they bid out everything to one contractor typically. So they want this to be as close to what we're going to do as possible. They said that their bids, as far as paving goes, have been pretty good. We will see, that's what they told us. So they requested that the board consider approving what they intend on paving.
We intend on paving them, we just don't intend on paying more than 1.1 million dollars.
Sure, and we can do a resolution that says not to exceed whatever amount, and that will be what it'll be. And if it exceeds that, then I think we'll have to not.
We've done it in the past. I understand what they're saying, but it's a big contract anyway, so I'm sure us taking several streets off wouldn't break the deal. And if they have to need, if they have to do it as a minimum with these additionals possible, then do it like that in the bidding process. But if this comes back, the engineers stated during the budget hearings, 30%, so if this, this could be a mean and a half dollars.
So in the, in the proposal, they, you know, they did highlight that they've had a decent amount of contingencies added on it and that they're fairly conservative in the bids.
So they think this is including the 30% in what you're saying?
What I understood.
So what is our appetite for the spend this year on paving?
Well, I, I don't believe the cost of paving is going to go down in the near future, and if these roads are determined by our supervisor of our public works, I feel like we should address them, because if we don't address them this year, we push them off to future years, I believe that the cost would be even higher to repair these same roads. So I would be in favor of Exhibit A. I like the cost of Exhibit B. I just feel like, I think he does a thorough job each year of inspecting, and his crew as well, inspecting all the roads. And if I've ever had any question about certain roads, he would take me and show me why he made those decisions. So I'm okay with Exhibit A, in my opinion.
Other thoughts?
How many, how many miles, it's on here somewhere, I'm sure.
It's 55,783 square yards.
It has the center line column.
Right, but it's not summarized.
Definitely not.
We have, what, 80 miles that we take care of?
Eighty, yes.
Pater is the longest one. Green Crest and Pater.
3.71 miles.
Less than 5% of our miles.
Let's see, so we've got a motion and a second, what is it that we want to do?
And once we pass this, this money has to be encumbered, right? Do we have, what account would we encumber that out of?
I was going to suggest the RID. I checked with the legal team, they're, they need to do some research to make sure that that's okay, but that would be my suggestion.
Why don't we just encumber it out of the general fund until we find out?
Your call. But we have 1.9 in the RID, and we have nothing else budgeted in it, and we haven't used it in several years.
Right, I'm not sure that's the project that we want to use it for. I remember the technical terms before, in order to use it, something about a project versus doing it across the board.
Okay.
And cash summary sheet I have, it doesn't have, well, it has 1.6 in there, what'd you say?
Right, 1.9 in the budget, because we'll get another 300, 3 or 400,000 next year.
I just decided to do it out of the general fund until we find out for sure we can do it out of the general fund.
I'd like to see some other options besides the general fund, what else could we take it out of?
TIF 2906. I wouldn't suggest anywhere else, just because we can put salaries most places, but we can't put it in the TIF and we can't put it in the RID. So those are the two.
How much, how much unencumbered do we have in there in the 2906?
Well, I'm thinking about next year, because we don't need to do it until we, we need to budget it, so.
Once we pass this, don't we need to encumber the money?
I don't encumber it until the first of the year. Because it's for 2025, so it can't be a 2024 PO, because this work doesn't start in 2024.
Right.
So it has to be a 2025 PO. So in the, next year's TIF, we have about 2 million. The only reason I suggest the RID is because I was trying to save the TIF for capital items that maybe we normally would pay out of safety service to preserve for salaries. I think starting 1-1, we need to start using the TIF for capital projects, so that we have more money in police and safety service for salaries, because we can't charge salaries to TIF. So that would be my suggestion.
But we don't have to encumber it until after the first of the year, and will that give our legal team an opportunity to make sure that we can do what we need to do there?
Yeah, so I think our, kind of our opinion was generally speaking, it seems like it'd be able to come out of the RID, we just wanted to be sure, as Trustee Maccabee indicated, there are some technicalities with respect to what the RID can be spent on, and we wanted to confirm that there was nothing that would be prohibitive in this case, but otherwise, I think it should be fine to be withdrawn from the RID.
Okay, so, but we don't have to do it today, so we have time to confirm those details and talk about it in December?
Right.
And I'll have it in the budget in the RID, and then if they tell me differently, I was going to move it. So whatever we put in the budget, it'll be, I'll make sure it's.
I just didn't see it out of the TIF then, rather than the RID, if you're going to put it into temporary budget.
Yeah, whatever you guys want, I just.
I understand what you're trying to do, and that was a question I had about such a large amount of money.
Right.
Because when we adopt the budget in December for next year, that would be included in your appropriation.
Right, and right now I have it in the RID and the budget I'm going to send you guys. If you want to change, that's fine. The TIF has the money because of the bond payments being so low. But I just, I know some capital projects that are going to be asked for, and I thought we could save the TIF for that. But your call.
So what I'd like to see for the December meeting is some fund options and what the best thing, because I think we do need to keep an eye to what those capital expenditures are, so I would like to see maybe some different things that we could choose from, maybe some menu items that, and different ways to split it or different ways to do that. But I'd like to just get an idea of that. I also am concerned about the funds replenishing appropriately and, and all of those things. So if we could maybe get some thoughts together about that and talk about it.
Mr. Goins and I did talk about it, and that's what we came up with, but we'll discuss it.
Let's, well, let's clarify about the RID, if we can do that or not, and then, yeah. And I'm glad that we have time to consider that, too. So it's good that it's come early.
And just because it's in the budget one spot, when we go to actually open the PO, if you guys would like to pick a different one, that's fine, I can re-appropriate the money.
Give us some options, because I want to make sure that we're balancing and that we're appropriating and putting these, our expenses across the different areas to preserve our capital position.
It is a RID capital fund.
I understand. I.
Out of paving, out of maintenance.
So yeah, if we could get, just get some different options, and let's take maybe a comprehensive look at the capital expenses that are coming up, paving, all of those things, so that we know what buckets we should be pulling out of for all the different things that we're forecasting that we needed to do. We talked about that earlier, the request list or the priority list, and if we can kind of take a look at the priority list and then also the different funds and kind of put together a comprehensive plan for that, I'd really like to see that in conjunction with our budget discussion.
Okay.
What, you've mentioned it a couple of times, what projects you already, have you already been told about?
Well, Mr. Goins is having meetings with the department head, so I don't personally know yet. He was going to give me a list to give to you guys, like I always do with the budget.
So could we get that to us before the next meeting, so that we have some time to think about it?
It'll be this week, it'll be included with your budget.
You seemed a little bit more excited about it since.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
Okay, so we're looking forward to getting that.
Well, my sheet is currently blank, I, until Mr. Goins tells me what to put on, and I'm not really sure what's getting by him, I just know what is going to be asked for. Well, I don't really know. I don't know, I just know that there'll be things asked for. You're here, no one's told me specifically, but I'm sure there are going to be some things.
All right, so we look forward to getting some proposals together on what that would look like and also the suggested funds, and then how, I'd like to also to make sure how that's going to impact our capital position, too, please.
Exactly, and maybe a five-year forecast from you, based on?
Yeah, that'd be cool.
Based on no levies? You want me to go based on?
I'd like to get that, well, I'd like to get a cash projection of what those funds are, and then juxtapose that with the different capital requests that we're going to be getting, just so that we can get this plan together. What I'd like to get to is so that we have a five-year projection of, here's what we'd like to purchase, here's what the funds are going to be generating, and that we know kind of where things are going and where things are going to be.
And where we have to start cutting that, or how many mils we have to ask for. So do it, do it with the current base income that we have, right? Do it, do it based on that.
I think there's probably some spreadsheets and whatnot that are out there that will kind of get you off in the right direction.
Okay.
Some of those things already exist. So we have a motion and a second. What are we looking to do, the 1.1?
Exhibit A. Yes.
Trustee Maccabee?
Yes.
That passes, may we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 24150, resolution authorizing the Administrator to apply for the CDBG grant for the Belmont Avenue Stormwater Drainage Project.
Motion to adopt? Second. Any discussion?
That's 10% match, right?
That's correct.
Hopefully it doesn't come back a million dollars.
I think we will reconsider if it does. Yeah. Yeah, I anticipate this being more within the, you know.
It's still twice as much money for the same amount of work as we did five years ago, so.
I know, I know.
Something's got to break, I mean, something's got to.
Trustee Maccabee?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemaier?
Yes.
Trustee Burden?
Yes.
That passes, may we have?
Maybe they'll skip us next year, so we won't have to worry about it.
May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 24151, resolution to authorize pay raise for Resource Officer Chuck O'Brien.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion, Chief?
I'm going to abstain from voting, I can still second it for discussion, correct?
So we did a lot of research on trying to figure out where to put Chuck as it relates to other SROs. It's very difficult to compare, because some are full-time police officers that are just assigned there during the. It's very difficult to compare, because some are full-time police officers that are just assigned there during the winter months for the school year. And then there are others who are for other jurisdictions who are just there for the summer. They don't make near as much. So I did a, basically an assessment of the job that he does, sent it back to Dave Lots. And he responded right, right away and said, that's what we'll give. So he'll be, we'll pay for what he does there. He knows why. Certain psychologist, traffic cop, he does it. So they're in agreement with it, and we'd like to get that approved before.
And Butler Tech reimbursed the township 100%.
Yeah, we never pay a penny for it, correct?
But he's our employee.
He is, correct.
And they pay the, this retirement, both sides of all that.
Yes.
All of his benefits.
Yes, yes.
And where, where does he fit in as far as our contract employees?
He's not a contractor.
He's not in either, either one of the contract groups or?
He is not, no.
So he's, so it doesn't affect any of our negotiations or anything?
It does not.
Thank you.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Abstain.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
That passes. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution 24-152, resolution authorizing the purchase of playground equipment for the Milton Street Park from Game Time Company at a cost not to exceed $122,000.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
We talked a little bit about this, right?
Yeah.
And what is the cost of the township?
So, yeah, this is, we've been awarded $150,000 in grant funds through ARPAS LFR funding. So it's, the money's there for that. We're not, the township's not contributing anything.
So we actually have 28,000 left if it's, if it goes at 122?
Correct. Yeah. So we'll probably-
Maybe get that basketball.
Yeah, right.
Temporary one or something, just stick it out there and stake it down.
That's an idea.
Adjustable.
It's an idea. Probably do fencing and we'll find a way.
And we have, it's lit, that kind of thing.
So we have lighting headed up there. So been talking to Duke about putting some additional light on there.
And by the end of the year, or when will this happen?
This equipment. So they'll purchase the, they'll, we'll place the order for the equipment now.
Spring.
Spring, yeah.
And when do we have to use that money by?
The end of 2025.
Is that June 30th, 2025?
No, it has to be encumbered by 1231, 24, and then paid in 25. And it has been.
And it?
It has been. Once you guys approve, this was the underserved community money that Butler County gave us. Once you guys approved the acceptance and payment of that, we encumbered it.
And what, what fund is that in?
2272. Which has to be zero by the end of the year. And this, it will take it to zero.
Any further discussion? Mr. Schultz?
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes, that passes. May we have the next resolution, please?
Resolution number 24-153, 153, resolution authorizing payment of $11,205.28 to Basis Companies as outlined in the development agreement.
I move to approve resolution 24-13.
Second. Any discussion?
And this is part of the agreement with, is this the most recent, recent TIF we get?
Yeah, so this is Bridgewater Landing. It's Canes, Star Wash.
Car wash, coffee shop.
Yeah, and the infrastructure for that.
And is this all we own?
Up to 500,000. This is the first payment. So we took the TIF, took out the school's payment, took 75%, and we'll pay them, and then took it off the 500,000.
So we have a balance of 488,000 whatever to pay?
Yes.
Up to that amount?
Up to, absolutely.
Not more than that.
Not more.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Committee reports. Trustee McAbby, anything on TID?
TID did not meet this, this month. We have the annual breakfast meeting on the first Monday of December. If anybody wants to come, you can just RSVP. It's at the Engineers Office. And we do have a meeting, but we usually meet for a light breakfast prior to that. Looking forward to seeing some of the updates on the project. You know, just like anything else, as far as development goes, sort of slows down a little bit and then you work your way back up. We have a number of projects. I don't have an update on them. Thank you.
I'm sorry. You said it was on the first Monday, which is December 2nd. At what time would that meeting be?
The meeting, I think, starts at 8:30. So the breakfast is like 7:45 or 7:30.
Are we asked to cook the breakfast if we show up?
There won't be as many people there if you cook, but-
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
All right, EMA met. We did end up passing that increase that we had talked about at the last meeting, and that was a good thing. I think that will help preserve the EMA going forward. Moving on to OKI, that meeting will be Thursday of this week. I do have, our alternate will be attending on behalf of me at that meeting. And Coalition of Large Urban Townships CLOUT, we had substantial discussion about membership drives and the composition of townships that would be members of that organization. And of course, we are all invited to the lunch at the CLOUT, for the CLOUT meeting there at the Ohio Township Association event in January. So looking forward to seeing everyone there. All right, board member comments.
I just want to again thank Mr. Hodge and all the volunteers that we had working the Veterans Day celebration. Also want to thank all the volunteers and staff that put on the Halloween event. It was very well attended. We had people volunteer that when they showed up didn't know they would be asked to volunteer. We took some friends that were there. I'm like, hey, can you help pass out candy? There's a lot more kids here than we anticipated. But it was a great night. Again, being in charge of the weather was pretty easy sometimes. It was a great night. The weather held off, and lots of families were there. And then I would just like to publicly wish my mother turns 80 on December 2nd. At 8:30, I'm going to try to bring her to that breakfast. That way I don't have to take out the dinner for the TID. I know.
Works the same.
Yes.
Yeah, TID.
Yeah. So Joan Scott, I love you, Mom. I hope you have a great birthday. That's all I have.
Yeah, again, I thought that the veterans' celebration was absolutely fantastic. It was wonderful. I really liked having the kids there. I think that they really made the day. So I hope to see them again at future events. It's very, very nice. We have with us this evening a young lady who is putting in a application for the OTA, the Ohio Township Association Scholarship. We need all the trustees to sign that, and I believe we have. So we wish you well. We hope you win. And definitely come back and give us a full report when you win, right? Okay. And thank you for taking the effort and to participate in that process. Okay, a couple of announcements. We have Title Wave Auto Spa Ribbon Cutting, which will be Thursday, November 14th at 9:30 a.m. We have our Fairfield Township Zoning Commission meeting, which will be Wednesday, November 20th, 2024, or at 7 p.m. Our offices will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday, Thursday, November 28th and Friday, November 29th. Our Bridgewater Falls Holiday Event will be on Sunday, December 1st from 4 to 6 p.m. And our Fairfield Township CIC meeting will be Tuesday, December 10th at 7 p.m. Our Fairfield Township Board of Trustees meeting, the next one, will be Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. Any other announcements?
Just a question on the holiday event. Is that the tree lighting? And then we're going to have the same, the radio station will be there playing Christmas music usually?
So Bridgewater is managing it.
Right.
Bridgewater, I'm not sure about all the details.
There's usually hot chocolate and ice skating or-
It's going to have some of that stuff.
Fake ice skating.
It's going to have some of that stuff. I'm not sure.
Okay. It's a nice event that they put on, so.
It might be different this year.
Might be different, but-
Because it's a different management.
Right.
A different night of the week, too.
Thank you for that.
Okay, I moved to, I am making a motion to move to executive session, person one to ORC 121.22, Section G1, to consider the discipline, appointment, employment, or compensation of a public employer official. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Harkemeyer?
Yes.
Trustee Birding?
Yes.
Trustee McAbby?
Yes.
That passes. Action may or may not be taken as a result of executive session. And at 8:21, we will go to executive session. Thanks, everyone, for coming in. You're welcome to stay if we come back.